Six o'clock. I've got an order to the city council work session for Monday, August 25th, 2025. Please rise if you would.
What do lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We will call these.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Philip Clark.
Here.
Doug Branch.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Brian Shumalinas.
Here.
Stet Stechman.
Here.
Adam Hoski.
Here.
Charlotte Clark.
Here.
Mark Gooden.
Okay, on to number four. Discussion items. The first one, sewer utility rate increase for fiscal year 26.
Just off the gate, I want to say this is my first council work session. So I'm going to be paying attention to how this is different from a normal council meeting. So don't work too hard in this work session. Be easy on me, please. Tonight, we're really. Get the work.
I'll try to take it easy.
We're all there.
First up, on the agenda, the sanitary sewer rate user study prepared by Town and Country Engineering. This is Greg. Or Gary, I'm sorry.
Greg.
Greg, right, Town and Country Engineering. So this item directly addresses financial sustainability, which is something I've talked to all of you about. We're all unanimous that financial sustainability is one of the top three things we're doing, or that we should be striving for. It's directly addresses financial sustainability of the two river sewer utility. Looks at how we fund ongoing operations, how we cover debt payments, and how we pay for the major improvements that we continue to do for our infrastructure. The city is facing a $118,000 shortfall for the 2025 project funding and another $165,000 shortfall for next year projects. So you put those together. We're looking at a combined projected shortfall of about $283,000 under the current rate structure. Why? Why do we have a shortfall? Because we keep investing in city infrastructure, combined with the state of Wisconsin requirement that we maintain at least 110% coverage of the clean water bonds. As you know, there's a lot of inflationary pressure for infrastructure investment projects. They've become very expensive over the last few years, like 4 million plus we're investing now in Harvest Street and Hemistree. So in order to maintain the sewer and the wastewater infrastructure, we have to keep doing annual capital projects. They must keep occurring if we want to try to get ahead of the infrastructure curve. We can't do that without access to the clean water flow. So the fixed monthly charge and the volume charge, they've only seen modest increases over the past decade. But at the same time, the operating expenses like electricity and chemicals and maintenance and materials, these all continue to rise with inflation. These costs are outpacing the revenue growth. So the rate study in front of you tonight lays out a few options to close this gap. The best answer is proudly spreading it to where all parties pay a little bit of the burden. It's a math problem, right? How do you want to solve a math problem? So we've got a few options in front of us tonight. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Matt, who will walk us through the findings in a little more detail.
Actually, I'll pass it to Greg Drussler.
All right, well, I'll jump in. So I'm Greg Drussler, I'm Vice President at Town and Country Engineering. I've been working with the city here for about eight or nine years now and was part of a couple of the last rate increases as well. Those were particular. Some of those were tied to improvements at the wastewater treatment facility, which I was part of that, those projects as well. And then I've been assisting the city for about the last six or seven years with your annual street utility projects. We've been assisting where the village prepares the plants and then we do the specifications, the assist with the public bidding and then administer the clean water fund and safe drinking water loans that are associated with those. From an outside perspective, your water and sewer rates are kind of right there with many of the other communities that I work with. My firm represents about 60 different villages and cities throughout the state. Many of them, I think our smallest client is something like 79 homes in a sanitary district, up to, you know, we deal with some larger communities that are in the 20-ish thousand resident range. So when I first started talking with Matt's predecessor, Jim, on this, you know, that we all want to keep up with our neighbors. We want to keep up with kind of where the market is in our water and sewer rates. You never want to be the most expensive game around. You also don't want to be the cheapest. And from an outside perspective, you are in a portion of the state that has worked hard to, I'll just put it bluntly, to be cheap. Very conservative approaches on your water and sewer investments. A lot of penny pinching happens in this area where people are really kind of competing hard with their neighbors to keep their rates low, to justify every dollar that is spent on infrastructure. And what happens when we get into that mode is typically reserve funds shrink. And that's kind of exactly where you're sitting here now. You do have a, about a $1.7 million equipment replacement fund for the sewer utility. That fund has largely been flat for about as long, about the 10 years that I've been working with you. That fund is there, consider that a rainy day fund, where it's intended and now required by the DNR to be in place so that when you have equipment failures at the wastewater plant or at any of your primary lift stations, quite honestly, that you've got a reserve fund to pull from to replace that equipment so that you're not living hand to mouth. So those dollars are set aside. I'm not even going to talk any further about those this evening. Beyond the simple statement of at 1.7 million, you're kind of on the low side of average there for a plant as big as yours is and as old as your plant is. Much of that plant dates back to early 1970s, which for many of us was a few years ago. For me, that was my lifetime ago. It's 50 years. It's 50, you have a 50-year-old plant that is showing signs of age of a 50-year-old plant. We have been able to upgrade some of the more critical areas there. But there is a, an aging plant there that at some point we are going to have to address in a big way. I can't say when that will be, but I think we would be silly if we don't start planning now for that. And as we start talking about that within the rate structure, I put in an arbitrary number of $100,000 a year. That $100,000 a year is not going to go far on plant improvements, but I put something in there as, I'm going to call it a placeholder. So that, and I slotted that, I believe, 2020 B to start, along with some smaller investments in your lift stations as well, so that we don't lose sight of the need for that investment. The other reason that I kind of slid it out that far is you do have some major debt service that's dropping off in 2027. That, again, some people look at when debt service drops off in a community, oh, that means we get to lower our rates. And I stand there and I say, no, 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 no. That's the last thing we want to do. Let's save that money and then reinvest that money. Because again, we have a ticking time bomb there with the wastewater plant. Time bomb being a terrible term for that, by the way. So as we, we got into the rate study, recognizing that the community wants to, or will need to raise the rates a minimum of $118,266 of additional revenue that's needed for us to close on the next clean water fund loan for that Harbor Emmett 16th Street project, along with the sewer lining that we're doing and the lateral repair program that you have. The city has been investing for about the last five to seven years on lateral repairs as part of the lead service lateral replacement program. And you've committed to a plan that has you replacing many of the sewer laterals that inevitably are in the exact same trench as those water services. Kind of the thought being, while we're here, let's take care of that problem as well. And because we only want to patch the concrete road once. So that has been kind of your, your program for a number of years now as we continue kind of picking away at the considerable number of lead service laterals that we have on the waterside. And honestly, those costs add up. Not that, you know, 50 feet of sewer lateral, 33 feet, which tends to be the length in your right of way most often, plus another maybe 20 to 30 feet to the average home. Not that that lateral itself costs a ton, but the restoration of all the street repairs that need to be made in conjunction with that, it ends up being a big price tag. We've worked with the city to secure low-interest loans for that, for funding that. I think the current note is at, is it 1.78 or 2.45% interest? You're never going to find a program that competes with that as far as the funding on the interest side. And the city has worked hard to take advantage of that program because it also has principal forgiveness, which is a fancy word for grant funding for a portion of it as well. So we're doing the right thing of using the DNR's programs to help fund our infrastructure. But now we've got to, we've got to pay the price. And so let's raise our rates now to cover this. So when I first sat down with staff and we kind of talked through various approaches, our approach has always been that we try to set our fixed fees to cover our debt service. That doesn't always work out penny for penny, but big picture, that's what we try to cover. The reason for that is that is an expense shared by all, so that fixed fee should be there to cover it. And quite honestly, we have to pay back that, that loan, whether we get one gallon of sewage a day or 3 million gallons of sewage a day. We still have to pay that back. So the intent of that fixed fee is that those are dollars coming in regardless of the flow. Those volumetric charges are intended then to help cover the cost of your, your operations and maintenance of those sewers. Obviously, and as well as the wastewater plant and the lift stations. The thought being, whether we get that same scenario of one gallon or 3 million gallons a day, the more flow we get, the more energy we spend on pumping, the more chemicals we use on treatment, the more energy we use on blowers, the more sludge we have to haul, et cetera. So as we looked at it, that was the program that we worked with the city to set up a number of years ago. And that was why the last, last rate increase, or the second last rate increase, we raised just the fixed fee because that particular project was funding a new screw press needed at the wastewater plant. So that was a flat $2 across-the-board fixed fee increase. We have rising needs for investment for paying back those loans. So we're again looking at raising the, the fixed fees. Kind of a dollar was the recommendation. And that would generate about another $67,800 a year in fixed fees. We also had recommended a 20 cent per 100 cubic feet. Quick, easy math, 100 cubic feet is 748 gallons of water. Water meters are set up for cubic feet measurement. We just, we take the meter reading. The average home uses about 3,500 gallons a month for an average family, which ends up being 5.05 hundred cubic feet. So in easy math, five, five additional volumetric units that we, the average home would get charged. Again, those volumetric charges are intended to, to cover the rising costs of treatment at the plant as well as rising energy costs, et cetera, for all of the lift stations that we have. But in addition to that, our neighbors in Mishikot that send their wastewater to our city pay that same volumetric charge. So by raising that volumetric charge by about another 20 cents, that raises another $3,000 or $4,000 of revenue from Mishikot, helping, having them essentially share in our cost of treatment rather than that being put just on the shoulders of the residents of two rivers. That 20 cent volumetric charge would raise about an average of $60,000 a year of additional revenue. Adding up those two, we had a dollar fixed fee charge increase. And I'm going to say for the average family of four that uses 3,500 gallons of sewage each month, that raises in nice even numbers, would add, would raise your sewer bill another dollar in volumetric charges as well. So you'd be looking at about a $2 increase for the average user. Those pieces, I'm going to say, are pretty straightforward. Here's where the fun starts. So as we took a step back and looked again at your, your sewer users in the community, one of the first things I pointed out was that you don't have an equivalent meter charge on the sewer side like you do on the water side. The water side does, water department does because Wisconsin Public Service Commission requires you to have an equivalent meter charge on the water side. Meaning that you're charging people based on the equivalent of a 5/8 inch or 3/4 inch water meter, which is what nearly everyone, all but 30 homes in your community, have in the average home. And because you had, you were not using equivalent meter charges, I'll pick on Bonnie. Bonnie was paying the same $18.85 a month for her meter as your biggest water user, which was the hospital, which has a 6-inch meter. So Bonnie and the hospital were saying that paying for that same flat meter charge, and then it really just came down to how much water they use versus Bonnie. Most communities use that same equivalent meter system to kind of, I'm going to call it level the playing field for all users in your community, looking at multifamily units, looking at industry, looking at commercial entities throughout. And the thought being that when you have someone that is using more water, yes, we're charging them more on a volume charge. But in most communities, you would charge them more on that fixed fee as well because the city needs to maintain that infrastructure to support them. The intent being Bonnie, who uses probably less than 100 gallons of water a day, should, is not putting a big strain on the wastewater treatment plant and not nearly the strain that someone like the hospital or, we'll talk more about Riverside Foods here next, the strain that those are putting on your infrastructure. So within the recommendation, there was an equivalent meter table, basically looking then to charge more meters or a larger equivalent meter multiplier based on your meter side. So going from memory here, I believe that the 1-inch meter was charged two and a half units. A 1 and 1/2 inch meter was charged five. A 2-inch meter was 28, thank you. Eight, a 3-inch meter was 15. A 4-inch meter was 25. And a 6-inch meter, which you have one in the city, it's at the hospital, is charged 50 units. And so with that, doing the math, the hospital would go from being a fixed fee of $18.85 per month to 18.85 times 50. So that's nearly a $900 increase for them for that larger meter. The intent again is to be able to take a look at, across the board, making the debt service fair and equitable amongst your users. That change, based on that table, would generate about an extra $132,000 a year in revenue. What I skipped over there was actually you, the city has a unit charge. And what that unit charge is, is if you have an apartment building with four apartments, they are charged $18.85 for that 3/4 inch meter that they have. And then they are charged three additional unit charges at a discounted rate of $12.85 for those three additional units to calculate their bill. So you, it wasn't exactly, you weren't exactly missing out on all that additional revenue. You had a system in place. It was discounted and it was only for multifamily. It did not include any changes for industrial or commercial users in your community. So by doing that, we would create basically 974 additional unit charges minus the, about 535, which would be the unit charges that we were charging. So we would have about 450 additional units being charged or equivalent meters charged, helping us share in the debt service here.
Yeah, and before you get too far off of it. So you're saying right now Aurora pays $18.85 a month? And this would knock it up to 900?
Yes.
That's a pretty big increase.
It is. They are the one entity in your community that gets hit very heavy.
What about any of the other businesses? Because that's a, that's a pretty big hit and I don't want to impact our businesses. And I look at the hospital as one that's going to come back to the rest of us and be that we use it.
I would also look at them as probably being the one entity in your community that has a rate structure in place that would easily absorb another $900 a month.
I wonder about the other businesses. All that may affect the baby.
Yeah, so there's a list in here in the report where I included every meter in the community that's over an inch and a half that would be impacted. So in there, there's a couple of pages of, of here are the individual entities. Someone like, someone that has an inch and a half meter and they're going from a single unit charge to five units. You know, that is roughly a $70 amount increase, 75. Not an insignificant amount, but if you are a business entity, a 70- Not an insignificant amount, but if you are a business entity, a seventy five dollar a month charge is a pretty, in most cases, a pretty absorbable impact. And again, we're not, we're not intending this to slap all of the industries in our community. The intent of this is to basically catch us up to a point where they're paying for their fair share of the public infrastructure that's in place.
Big numbers, but you're shifting, it's a little more fair, shifting the burden off the residents.
Correct.
On due higher.
And I'll point out, the hospital is already paying for fifty units on the water side. It would not be a surprise to them. Shouldn't be a surprise to them when this happens on the sewer side as well.
And two family homes, but being right now, like at my house, I pay thirty one sixty a month. And when you look at the hospital, it is one and a half what I pay at home versus just me and my wife.
It's all about how you want to structure the math problem to shift the burden.
Will there be communications sent out via to the rate rate?
Not by me.
I think it was discussed at one point.
But from the city, yes.
For the capacity, but I wasn't sure about for, or, you know,
Yes.
Another commercial or industry.
In, in most cases, you would look to publish that on your website. You may send out a flyer with billings depending on, we all make that sound easy, like sending out a flyer with billings. If you do a postcard type billing, that becomes a real pain. So.
For these places that are impacted huge, like the hospital and a few other places, we would do more than that. We would do some direct outreach and conversation.
Okay, I know we, we did track a lot of our other businesses, but designs apply to our own.
There's about ninety five customers out there that have inch and a half meters or larger.
Many of them, I'll, I'll just clarify that, many of them are multifamily already. So they're already paying unit charges on it. So it's, it has an impact, but not as dramatic as,
Right.
as anticipated.
What's going on the increasing from a five eights to a two inch charge?
To go from a five eighths meter to a two inch meter is eight units. It would be an equivalent charge of.
Times twelve, eighty five.
Yep. You will actually have, I don't have the exact count. I believe there's a few entities that would actually get a slight deduct because there are entities that if you have a eightplex, for example, and an inch and a half meter, you are currently charged for one unit at eighteen eighty five and seven more units at twelve eighty five. And by that switch to an inch and a half meter, I think it's a five. So you get charged five units instead. There is a few outliers that that would happen to.
Are there units that all have their own meters? These all have water meters. I mean, they all have separate water meters. Four units with four.
If it's a fourplex that has four separate water meters, it's probably a five eights or three quarter inch water meter. So they'll only be charged one.
Okay.
And right now, they wouldn't be charged a, a extra unit fee either. So they would just be charged the eighteen eighty five presently.
Well, it would be eighteen eighty five probably times four because you have four bills, won't you?
Well, correct.
Right.
Each one would have its own separate bill.
Just answer my own question.
Yep.
Uh, so between those three, the fixed fee increase, the volumetric increase and the equivalent meter change, that gets us most of the way towards covering the additional debt service that would be taken on in twenty twenty five and in twenty twenty six. The last leg of the stool, if you will, is for years, the city has had in place what's called category B charges. Category B is basically intended for users, and typically those are industrial users that discharge a higher strength wastewater. The city has been working with Riverside Foods for a number of years now. In the last two years, there has been some sampling that's been done. We've kind of shown what has been known by those at the wastewater plant for years that they are putting out much higher strength wastewater. And by higher strength, in their process, they, they tend to, their process is really pre-cooking the frozen foods, breading them, pre-cooking them, so that all we have to do is warm them and eat the cheese curds that we all love. But going down the sewer is oil, fats and bread. And those three, much like our arteries are clogging, the pipes around the community and causing much higher costs of treatment at the wastewater plant.
After my tour last week of the wastewater treatment plant, I, I can never eat a cheese curd again.
Well, it's, I agree too.
It's amazing how much of that's going in there.
There are days when you walk down there and it smells great to me. But clearly not a healthy choice. And there's days where the, this influence screen, you're just, you're watching it pull it out just on a steady stream. Are they like that every day? No, but there's days when it is that concentrated. I know that the city has a number of pipes that need to be cleaned and televised on a much more regular basis because, again, this breading and fats and oils that we're putting down are clogging up those pipes. We'll try not to have sewer backups in, anywhere else in their community. So it just is a more regular maintenance item for, for us as well. So the last piece of this is then a recommendation that we enforce category B charges on Riverside Foods. Category B charges are basically, we monitor already how much water use they have on a daily basis. So we charge them for the water use. We then charge them a surcharge for BOD, which is a very fancy term for organic matter going down the sewer. TSS, which is suspended solids, which is inorganic matter that's going down the sewer, and then phosphorus. We have a limited data set on the sampling. There are, so the surcharge is in place so that if they're over two hundred or two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter, we charge them for the difference. In this case, there are, the highest reading that I saw, I think, was sixty seven hundred milligrams per liter. So twenty times, thirty times the concentration that's allowed. Sometimes they're down in the five, six hundred range on, on what I'm going to call a good day or an off day, depending on how you're looking at it. But in any case, they're putting out a much more concentrated sewage than anyone else in the community. By enforcing your category B charges, I'm going to say that I'm conservatively estimating a hundred and thirty one thousand dollars a year in additional revenue. And the way that that would work is we would work with them to get a, typically it's a weekly monitoring system. They have to have mammals immediately outside of their facility on their sewer lateral where the city staff or the, or the business, or in some cases, a third party, third party entity is hired, so it's independent of everyone else. We'll go out there, collect a sample, they'll test it. And we basically build that into a running spreadsheet that's going to calculate then based on the, the data points that we have. Here is their monthly concentration, average concentration, and here is their monthly total flow. And here's the bill. That will be a big number. That could, I mean, realistically, that could be a ten thousand dollar to twenty thousand dollar additional sewer charge to this business every month. And I will say that in most cases, that is a punch in the nose to a business that gets their attention and they will finally start doing what the city's been asking them to do for years, which is clean up their act.
How many years have we been working with that?
The problem started around twenty nineteen when they did their expansion. My understanding, there were some discussions initiating during COVID twenty twenty. It kind of fell by the wayside for various reasons. And then I picked it back up in late twenty two, twenty three, so going on three years now.
So they won't be surprised.
They are not surprised. Last week with them and I point blanked them with the limited data that we have. As Greg said, ideally, we want weekly data, i.e. daily data for a month. Ongoing every single production day, we are seeing one week out of a month. And sometimes their west production line is not working, but we are still seeing abnormally high flows. When they are in production, we see a lot of additional loading coming from their site. They were also told that prior to the beginning of next year, that they also need to put in a east side production line sampling manhole or mechanism so we can get data from that production line as well. I have, they have shared their sampling data with us, coordinates. We in turn have done some rough calculations and easily we're looking at ten thousand dollars a month just on the west production lines. And we can basically say if the east production line is outputting, just like the west production line, yeah, the, the cost to them will ultimately increase significantly. Now, the intent there is, the hope is that they then lower or take some action to reduce that loading because anything they can do on the front end is going to help them on the back end.
And if you're wondering, Mantowak has a category B surcharge, so does Algoma, Port Washington and Shippensburg.
So what, what are we doing with that cheese curd stuff? Does that, does that get processed the same as the sludge?
The cheese curds actually get taken out, put into a dumpster and landfill.
And that costs us quite a bit.
That costs us additional dollars as well.
I, I would say much of it does. There, there is a good portion of that that will still go through the process. It'll still go through aeration, digestion and we'll haul it out and land apply it as well. But it's kind of a.
Cheese curds are going on the field somewhere.
Yep. So I would say that worst case scenario is, is that the city is charging them ten to twenty thousand dollars a month as a category B user and it's additional revenue coming into the community to pay for what's being sent to us. Best case scenario is it gets their attention and they actually clean up their act. Because ultimately, that's, that's best for the community that we're able to do that. The, the underlying truth in that is that they are a heavy contributor to the wastewater plant. Your wastewater plant by DNR statute is overloaded. And while it still means it's discharge limits every month and does a great job, on paper, it's overloaded and every year on your annual report, you get an F on your report card because your treatment plant is overloaded. So I think getting Riverside Foods in check will go a long way to upping our score there.
Do they understand that? They know we're giving Fs because of them, aren't they?
Yep, and two months ago, we actually had the DNR attend one of our progress meetings. And DNR was pretty blunt with them. If they don't take action, DNR will potentially come down on us for not meeting our permit requirements. And any upgrades that we potentially would have to do to come into compliance, we can pass those costs directly onto them, which would be significantly more than what they will be seeing, A, as a category B customer or need to do to help offset their current loadings. So, long story short, the ball is in their court. And they know it's in their best interest to come into compliance.
Do they also know? I never eat cheese curds anymore. Do they also know that it never dissolves or breaks up after going through miles of pipes and being suspended in water? Those cheese curds never break up once they escape.
The cheese curds don't, but the breading does. And a lot of times, it's that breading that is actually making it through the initial screening. And that's what's actually then floating on our primary separators and things of that nature. So, yes, they are aware that they have seen it firsthand. But I think the dollars are going to speak more volumes than the pictures.
The past six years of conversation.
Well, at least the past three years of conversation.
I thought they were hauling away.
They are hauling, they have changed their cleanup process or improved their cleanup process and are attempting to dry sweep most of their product that has fallen to the floor or whatnot. However, it still befuddles us how literally you can get a cheese curd through an opening in a drain the size of my pen.
They take those covers off.
Exactly. So when supervisors or whatever are watching, they lift the grate, spray it down.
I mean, even in the, the average worker there is defense. If you're being directed, hey, we got to clean this up, we got to get this done. They're just, they're making it go down the drain and quite literally, from a management side, it's costing them nothing extra right now for it to go down the drain. So they will change their enforcement processes within how their staff does cleanup once there is dollars associated with it. I've, I've worked with this on breading companies, distilleries, breweries, cheese processing plants. You name it, we see it until you start enforcing category B charges and really hitting them where it hurts, which is the pocketbook, it doesn't change.
Yeah, and just aside, Riverside Foods will be our first category B customer. Not to say that they will be our one and only. We will take a look at other potential high volume, high strength users yet to be determined. So we are not just singling out Riverside. We are going to look at other customers as well.
To change the subject, but can we get rid of the the residents of the, where we see what their average bill is between November and March? And then they get that for the summer, like, and you just have regular bills? Because we have a lot of people that go to Florida every winter. So then you're taking the water usage as zero when you're not here. And then that's what they have to pay for the summer. It doesn't seem fair for people that are there. I understood the process of it was in case you fill in a kid's swimming pool or something with.
Or washing the car, or watering your grass.
Yeah.
That all come into effect for everyday residents too. That all come into effect for everyday residents too. Another equity question, probably for another day, but it's an equity question.
I, I know in twenty twenty two, Greg actually proposed that before I came on board to get rid of the residential winter billing quarter policy. That ultimately was voted down either by committee and or council, I don't know which. And it was just looked at as just increasing the fixed rate. I actually had that same mindset because we do have a lot of rental properties or silver properties that are not necessarily used during the winter months. And they're getting basically a nominal rate for.
Summer.
The, the summer season. But yes, as Adam pointed out, it's for watering your lawn, it's for washing your cars, filling your swimming pool. So on the water side, you're getting billed that, but it's not going down the sanitary sewer. So is there a deduct on that or should there? And that's where the winter billing quarter philosophy came from.
And a lot of communities do it, a lot of communities don't do it.
So, but as Kyle mentioned, that could be a, a discussion for a later date. I'm gonna say it's not gonna increase the revenue a lot. But I can't say definitively, definitively what a lot would be.
Yeah, someone had mentioned about having to purchase a meter to put on outside the spigot just for watering your grass or something like that, that they can have red so they can see what's not going down the drain to take back off or something, if they wanted to spend the money on it.
So you have a number of irrigation meters in the city already, but it's actually a surprisingly small number per community of your size. I do see your discount meters as their term, their irrigation meters. Those are reused pretty prolifically in some communities. A lot of newer, high-end developments, you'll, every home will have one because everyone sprinkles their lawn. The unintended consequence of that is as soon as you start offering that up and promoting that, the water utility gets a nice little bump because now they're charging a number of people for two meters. If they're charging for the, the everyday meter and then also for the irrigation meter as well. So it will have a slight impact on the sewer department. I would say we would likely have a slight increase in revenue. But you'd actually have a surprising, I think a surprising jump in the number of people that would buy, pay for a second meter for sprinkling.
Go ahead, Adam.
The other option would be, can, can you use the lowest six months as an average? Versus just calling it the winter months? So if those people are only here in summer, that would be their average, wouldn't be worked out in summer. They're not here in winter for everyone else, it would be using your winter months would be your lower, your lower average. Because I really don't think it's right to charge for why that's not going to the storm sewer. Or it's going to the storm sewer when you're watering your grass, filling your pools, cleaning your cars. I mean, that actually adds up to quite a few gallons. I mean, when you start taking that into effect for some people.
It does, but then you start, as a homeowner, you have to look at that and say, if I'm paying a, a fixed cost for a second meter, what is that annual cost as well? So it's, it's economics.
No, there'd be no second meter. I'm saying you would just average a difference that they're using the winter months, just use the lowest six months. Which for the average person here, it's gonna be the winter. The snowbirds, a lot of it's summer when they're here, so they're still getting clucked at same.
No, that would be their high months during the summer.
Yeah, but they would have the whole ones. If they're only here three months out of the year, then you'd have to take those.
Sounds like job security for engineers at Tom and Country for future study.
Yes, we can definitely look at that. I don't know, I mean, I don't think we wanna go down that route right now. I mean, what we have in front of us is already complex. So we can definitely look at it further and to me, that's a minor ordinance revision compared to what we're potentially looking at.
The last piece that I guess that I was gonna mention tonight, then I was gonna shut up and just answer questions, was if you do the math of, again, that four-pronged approach of fixed fee increase of sixty seven thousand eight hundred dollars, volumetric charge of sixty thousand dollars a year, equivalent meters adding another hundred and thirty two thousand dollars in cost or in revenue, and category B being a hundred and thirty one thousand. It more than covers that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase that we were looking to cover for this coming year for twenty five and for twenty six. The intent on that, on my end, was intentional, that we overshoot the mark for two reasons. One, I believe that as soon as we start charging Riverside Foods those category B charges, they're gonna not fix their problem, but they're definitely gonna tighten it up. Which again, is a, is a benefit to all users in the community. But I think that will back off maybe some of the revenue that we receive. But I'm also trying to get us to a point where we are not just covering our cost to the penny in hopes of being able to push off that next rate increase that's needed. Or maybe even get us to a point where we are now budgeting for a larger CIP program. Again, going circling back to, you have seventeen lift stations, wastewater treatment plant that's rated for three million gallons a day. You have some big ticket items there that are gonna need work at some point.
We're not just trying to pinch pennies and make the mortgage payment for that month. We're trying to plan ahead with future investment.
Yes.
Down the road.
And didn't you spend ten million dollars on that in the last ten years?
About eight, I believe.
So I mean, there's a lot of new stuff there.
To put it in perspective, if we were to build a new three million gallon a day plant to replace what you have there.
You're saying it's not big enough?
If I were to build a, just a three, I'll even round it up to a four million gallon plant, a day plant. That is about a hundred and fifty million dollar investment. And that is separate, that doesn't buy you new land. That doesn't buy you a new interceptor or force main to pump it somewhere else. That would be, we have a spot, here's a new plant. We're, we're doing that right now for the city of Reedsburg. We have another one in planning that is roughly that size for the city of Jefferson. I will say with certainty that I'm not far off with a hundred and fifty million dollar price tag.
Probably goes up by ten million a year.
Correct. So when we did the study of the treatment plant, I did a plant assessment when I first started working for the city, so I'm gonna say that was twenty eighteen-ish. Take out my notes here. We identified the high priority items, which was roughly seven or eight million dollars worth of upgrades. We've taken care of those. But here we are nearly a decade later already and those medium priority items are kind of creeping up to that higher priority B. And we're gonna have to reinvest in that plant very quickly. We can't keep kicking the can down the road.
Some of the expenses that we are presently seeing is we are patching some of the clarifier. We are replacing pumps on a continual basis, we're replacing valves on a continual basis. These are expenses that we are ultimately taking out of our operations budget to deal with. Because even though they are significant dollars, in order to get the repairs done, we are just taking them out of our operation budget, making them happen. Because it's time sensitive. So yes, there are a lot of things that are, because of age. We just replaced two pumps that were fifty-year-old pumps. Couldn't get parts from anymore, so.
So our list, we had seventeen lift station?
Yes.
And one's brand new, right?
One.
Green Street or?
Iron Street.
That's it.
I.
So the other one, actually.
Some of those stations also date back to the early to mid seventies. The pumps on many of those are fifteen-ish years old. Control panels that are, most of those dated to the eighties or early nineties. And you'll see as you inventory control panels that many of them are showing pretty significant signs of aging. The radios and processors, computers that are inside of those. The inventory on those, most of those are quickly approaching twenty years of age. And the radios are getting hard to find. And there was a whole secondary market on eBay or Amazon providing secondhand used radios because people get them refurbished to swap them in. Treatment plant operators are desperate. They're out there fighting with every other treatment plant operator and every other water plant operator for those same outdated radios because everyone has them and needs to swap them in. So it's a, it's a not good situation. And when I worked with the previous DPW, I had a much more aggressive program in place for the lift stations. And he was like, timeout. He's like, you're gonna, you're gonna run us into the ground just on these? And I'm like, it's pay me now or pay me later with the lift stations.
Nobody wants it in their basement.
No one wants it in their basement.
No.
And that's, that's happening when those stations build and put on the wild drive and. Reservoirs after.
Yeah, go ahead. So once a business gets classified as a, a.
Category B, yep.
Is there a scenario where they clean up their act sufficiently enough that they would be downgraded?
If they can get their discharge strength to below our ordinance levels, yeah.
Okay, so that's not an income stream to be relied upon forever?
No.
It's just quite, uh, well, it's kind of a costiness that much so they're paying for it.
Correct, correct.
Well, you had, you had sewage back up into homes around there because of the Riverside?
I believe with the high water levels, plus the discharges from Riverside back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Yeah, some properties on the east side were impacted before my time, but yes, I heard this.
I got what you're saying, I needed to add that to my insurance, but I did.
I kinda remember there being, there's a tunnel that goes underneath the river. And that got plugged, right? And that's what I remember.
Don't, don't remember the details, but yes, that was part of it.
Difficult to clean that up.
Yes.
I believe that's a twenty-four inch pipe that goes underneath there and yes, that got plugged about that same time.
So this is not a very fun topic, but we have a workable solution that solves the math problem and it makes it a little more equitable and fair with spreading the burden. Think it works, does council wanna spend more time on this? We've been going on this for an hour on this topic. Are we ready to move on to more fun topics like the beach or do we want to chew on this more?
I guess timeframe wise, I mean, if we're okay with it, we need a formal action ultimately to modify the ordinance. And then because of the timing, we will not be able to close on the whole, this year's loan until early twenty twenty six. Ultimately, because once we approve the ordinance revisions and enact these changes, proposed changes, wanna get the word out to our customers, all customers, of what is coming down the pipe. So that hopefully will be a two-month window, October, October, November, December, in a nine-year world, that they would go into effect either late December or in December. End of January, we can then show DNR that we have the income stream on the books or in place to cover our debt service for both twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. So ultimately, show hands, since it's not necessarily an action item. Are we good with moving forward with what is proposed? If that is the case, we would move forward with finalizing ordinance revisions.
I'm good.
I'm not good or happy with it, but I understand why we have to do it.
Yeah.
It's kind of one of the most important things to do.
Right.
So it's a dollar increase in the fixed fee just for next year, the same for the following year?
No, it would be a one dollar increase in. Assuming that the ordinance has written that it goes into effect January first of twenty twenty six. There would be a one dollar fixed fee increase. And then there would be a twenty cent per one hundred cubic feet volumetric increase as well. And again, if you are an average user and you use thirty five hundred gallons a month, that, that hits your pocketbook to the tune of about two dollars a month.
And that's for twenty twenty five?
That.
That would go into effect January one, twenty twenty six.
So it's for twenty twenty six.
It would allow us to close on the twenty twenty five loan as well as then in the future of the twenty twenty six.
And then ultimately transitioning over to the equivalent meter charge. And then, as I mentioned, taking a look at our commercial industrial customers, including Riverside Foods and switching the appropriate ones over to a category B customer. Obviously Riverside is the one that jumps out for sure, but we need to take a look at other customers.
Yeah, I would be for that.
I worry about the, um, the cat I mentioned earlier, the small businesses that might get charged, I'm sure like Aurora's getting a hundred dollar bill. What are the businesses?
Decreditism.
Yeah, that's the only other thing I'm worried about is them getting hit with a lot of extra charges. If that makes sense.
What, twenty, twenty thousand a month? Water bill, probably. Don't know what their water bill is on the top of, anything like that. But. Form rate would be increased and the high school would be increased.
They have both recesses in there twice, they have two, aren't they?
They have one, um, regular meter and a deduct meter.
We have, man, I have kind of gone through this since this draft was sent to everyone. We've updated the table because there are a few in here that are listed multiple times. So we cleaned up that and then I had some minor text changes in the report as well, but.
This, this is also showing irrigation, water meters and also, as Greg just said, deduct meters or credit meters. So the list has to be modified a little, a little bit, thus the reason why I chose Aurora having two six-inch. So the list has to be modified a li- a little bit, thus the reason why I chose Aurora having two six inch water meters. While one is actually a deduct meter.
Did we, did you guys look into the legal ramifications? From, from Riverside?
As far as what?
Just what they might do, have they mentioned anything?
No, I mean legally, it's the city just enforcing the ordinance. And they're, they're subject to ordinance because they're connected to the system. Their legal ramifications to be limited as to what their options are, they're connected. Here's the bill. Testing, normally when you're negotiating with someone like this, the, the next step will be who's gonna do the testing? Is that gonna be the city doing the sample, is that them taking the sample? Oftentimes those parties don't trust each other, so then a third party is hired to collect those samples. And it's made available to everyone.
And right now they have a, a lab, uh, taking the samples and analyzing the samples. Uh, I've had a great rapport with that company uh in the past, so I am fine with who they have and are utilizing. So.
Let's see.
My understanding then, we will move forward with what is proposed and we will get bringing something back. Uh. At the latest, I would say mid September.
Any other questions?
Let's talk about something more fun, Professor Mandis. Three man, double beach. Yeah, oh, it's a puzzle.
It's interesting, everything that goes down behind this. It's interesting, you don't think about all that stuff. What do you tell, what do you think it'll waste that much, just think?
All right, everyone, I um printed you off some additional pages, uh, just to help with discussion and kinda do some comparisons. Uh, so I'm gonna start with that, this is the package you have here. The front page is the current concession stand bathhouse at Shota Beach. So I was looking through uh plans for this building, yeah, the architectural plans for this building are originally created in nineteen fifty five. So I haven't uh pinpointed the exact areas built, but the plans themselves were built in nineteen sixty five. This building, uh, it's, it's time for something, some sort of direction for this building. And so we need to discuss what those would be. In terms of the concession stand, we are grandfathered into health code. Uh, and my understanding is we perhaps have at least a year left on being grandfathered in on the health code. Uh, for the concession stand in this current state. So the ceiling is like a vaulted picnic shelter ceiling almost, that's not, like, that's not code, the concrete floors are not code. The, the mixture of storage and hot water being electrical, not code. The issues with our sink, uh, a lot of things that fairly soon. Uh, perhaps as soon as a year, maybe two years out, the, the health department will uh give us a license to operate the concession stand anymore. Pretty functionally difficult to use for the concession stand as well, we do, uh, we basically do reheated things, uh, and there's, uh, in the concession stand. Restroom capacity also is um a definite need for the beach, we're always busy down there. Uh, picture, there's one picture out here of the men's restroom, I didn't go into the women's restroom to take a picture for you. Uh, so though they're quite dated, um, and pretty kinda limited capacity, they also have, there's also quite large changing, open changing areas. Uh, most signs of concession stand, not really what a lot of people are into so much anymore in terms of the changing areas, I would say. Um. So we haven't gotten any quotes on renovation, uh, what it would take to make that existing facility more usable or increase capacity. But probably pretty large numbers in terms of renovation. So as we think about that, what we would take to get it into compliance and make it more useful and really meet the goals that we set in the Shota Park master plan. We set that plan that we drastically want to reduce our. Our dependence on water bodies at the beach, uh, be able to generate more revenue for maintenance of the beach. Um, and really continue to have the beach as kind of a prime destination and attraction. Uh, we're part of the parts of the master plan, so uh, we've gotta think about how we accomplish those goals with this building that's uh on the ground right now. So you'll flip through the next few pages and these should have been in your, uh, these renderings would have been in your uh pre meeting packets as well. So uh throughout, really at the beginning of this year, we had architecture, uh, do some. El- uh, outdoor elevations and a floor plan for us, so we've got over twenty thousand dollars probably in architectural work that we've done. That was funded last year with uh capital borrowing uh funds that we had. Um, this design has gone to the advisory record who's uh thought a lot about it, they uh, they liked it. We haven't taken an official vote on it, we tried to, the last meeting, we did a forum, but overall the consensus was without definitive voting. Uh, was that it was, that they really liked the design, um. If you wanna flip your, those. So this would be the front, so you'd have to imagine that there's actually a laundry drive right in front of you, like it currently is. So if you're looking out these windows, you're looking at the beach and Rotary Pavilion across the street. Yes, sir.
Is it noted yet that those swings were not gonna be there?
Yeah, so I didn't take the time to pay, yeah. You'll also see out here that there are these like patio porch swings uh on the front. Uh, suggestion from advisory record was, well, if there's lines coming out of the new concession facility, that's not a great place for those swings. But there probably is an opportunity to put them on the side of the building, near the law where those restaurant entrances are, if you want to keep them. I just didn't wanna pay the architect a couple of, an hour's worth of work to use the windows, so. Uh, the other thing that you can see better on the second image is uh. The building itself, the interior rental space is really the most important big addition to this, other than bigger restrooms and a more functional, bigger concession stand. Um, is the indoor rental space, it's essentially almost two stories of height of ceiling in that building. And then there is uh kind of a slight walkway on the exterior in the front. And then there is an upper deck obs- observation platform above the concession stand as well. So um, if you go to the floor plan, I printed you a big one. Um, that center rental area, indoor shelter area, that will seat about a hundred people in chairs, sixty to seventy people at tables and, uh, tables and chairs. The back picnic shelter area, which is similar to what we have now, uh, would seat. Uh, I just had it. Uh, sixty at picnic tables. Uh, and then that observation deck would seat twenty four to thirty six, probably on top of the concession stand, which you don't see on. Uh, so that's kind of a thought that there would be garage doors, uh, windowed garage doors on the back of the building that you could roll up. And you could have a rental party that could go from the patio picnic shelter area indoors to make those parties much larger. Um. Interior restrooms for that rental space, the outside of the building, kinda when you're looking at the, the layout on the right. There are two exterior kinda family style restrooms on the one side of the building. And then just three straight changing rooms, outdoor showers on the other side as well. So it's a, it's a cool looking plan, uh, right now, um. As I put together today, as when I was doing most of this work, some kind of examples of what other communities are doing. So this one is in DePere, uh, Voyager's Park, this is, I think this is actually computer rendering, but it's, it's there now, it's working. Uh, that rental space in this building is only like thirty six people. Uh, so fairly small when they roll up their garage doors, what they do mostly for this is more of what we would do at Central Park with concerts and a beer garden type of uh. Activities, uh, park restrooms, things like that. Uh, but they're getting a lot of success out of that, we went, uh, Joe Menison and I and a few others went up to visit that site a few weeks ago. Uh, next one was the news recently that Green Bay is gonna be doing this at their, uh, their Riverside Park. So obviously a large pavilion space there. Uh, I started pulling some photos from around the Great Lakes, uh, the first one here is Manistee, Michigan, I was literally there two weekends ago and I took those pictures. Uh, their concession stand is mostly a picnic shelter with a, a, a pretty role plus food offering, they're making grilled cheese and wraps, fresh sandwiches, things like that. Uh, much higher end food, affordable food really, but much higher than what we are currently doing. This other one is Benner Harbor, Michigan, another massive beach town in Michigan. You can see Sheboygan's on the lake, an indoor rental space. Racine's has a small indoor space, mostly concession stand and they're using the outdoor space for events. Uh, Kenosha's has a pretty kind of awesome setup of events and activities that go on around there. But that is Kenosha's as well, and I threw on the master plan app, we need to discuss kind of the locations at all. Um, yeah, so if we go back to the, the renderings, really, I think what we hope for, that's the situation we're in, like with a new building like this. Is that we can start to put more revenue into beach operations, beach maintenance, uh, possibly contributing back to utilities and other expenses for the concession stand in that building. As of right now, the concession stand doesn't pay any of its own utilities or contribute in that way. Um, any revenue, net revenue that we make from the concession stand, which this year may be as much as twelve thousand dollars, it's been a good year. That will have twelve thousand dollars net, that's been going to funding concerts and special events and fireworks uh right now, so not a huge amount of revenue. To, uh, but it definitely makes those special events uh happen. With a better concession stand, um, definitely kind of envisioning being able to serve a fuller meal. Get those per person kinda transaction amounts up so that uh people are spending more money there. And then setting a ring structure, a rental structure for bigger events out of that, that rental space. The other in- interesting pieces of this, uh, are a lot of local residents, um, throughout the master planning process for the open space plan and the Shota Park master plan. There's a lot of push for indoor rental spaces, so the place I didn't put in here was Manitowoc, uh, Lincoln Park Cabin Facilities. Those are larger, those are, some of those are ninety six people capacity or, or bigger, and they have full kitchens in them as well. Um, people have seen those and thought that those were great, that we should be having something in a park similar to that. Uh, the other part of this is we could compartmentalize the heating in this building. Lot of demand traditionally for getting the restrooms open in the shoulder seasons for walkers and community members there as well. Um, yeah, hopeful, and hopefully obviously continuing to make it a destination that people wanna come to and be a part of.
Can you touch on how many weddings we currently have at the beach in, like, every year?
Zero. Well, I think there was one this last weekend, it was on the Rotary Pavilion, I jokingly say zero because the Rotary Pavilion's rental rate is pretty darn low.
So say zero and two.
Yeah, it's um, pretty negligible, we, I think when I first started, we would sometimes block off sections of the beach. Try to like rope them off so weddings could set up chairs there, we don't do that anymore, it's just too busy and kind of a huge inconvenience to everybody using the beach. Um, so, yeah, middle of the stage, say, say, what's that term?
They go up to the stakeboards.
Or they go to the stake.
And then they may pay because everybody else.
Yeah, sure, call on more revenue. So, yeah.
You would have a wedding or a birthday party on the February weekend.
Uh, I would actually say that the size of this building was fairly conservative. That at a sixty to seventy person interior capacity, we're probably even a little bit small with this size of facility. To be able to really, getting over a hundred people, the hundred and twenty five people would be ideal indoors to start to be able to manage a lot of people. Now, the price tag obviously starts to go up, so architecture quoted this at one point nine million without demolition. Uh, and without kind of the core furniture or infrastructure interior pieces. So by the time we get that built with demolition, yeah, probably two point two, two point five, uh, the high end to get the entire building built. Uh, we'd go to a larger capacity interior space, we would have to go to fire suppression indoors, uh, which starts to get more expensive as well, we'd probably be pushing. A lot of, uh, so we just have to think about the strategies, going back to where we currently are. Do we make a wholesale renovation, the money that we've probably a decent amount of money that we put into that renovation to make that concession stand better? Do we put that into concession stand now as it is, or do we put that into supporting uh a new facility? Uh, it's kind of the, kind of the fork in the road decision that I think we've gotta really consider, so.
So the cost of this is above and beyond what the original plan was calling out?
For what, for?
The budget, I mean, what you're trying to, two, one point two. That wasn't in the original budget for the entire initiative park, or was that part of it or is it above and beyond?
We don't really have a budget.
I don't really have a budget. Well, I mean, what the improvements we're doing this year, are you talking about those?
Yeah.
Yeah, the improvements we're doing this year are around four hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. And that's a fifty fifty split between city funding and uh grant funding, and this was not. So what's included in it this year is the interior of the restroom building is by the horseshit pits, all the new pathways, new picnic shelters. A strategic plan and branding and correct orientation for all the signage, a new signage, removal of the old tennis court, native areas. And I might be forgetting something else, but that got us, about four hundred thousand dollars got us all back this year.
I think what we need from staff is a vision from council of, do you wanna see something grand and spectacular that will last for another generation? And have added revenue with the rental? Or do we wanna go a little lower and just focus on renovating and getting it up to code?
I've messed around with a business plan, which I didn't bring with me tonight because it starts to really get in the weeds. Uh, but I could see thirty to forty thousand dollars in net revenue that would either be used for utilities. Uh, debt service or, yeah, whatever we decide, but maintenance for the beach, uh, trash, those different types of things. Um, so, yeah, that, there is a potential to have a decent amount of revenue hopefully just out of something of this size.
Is this, is this smaller than what it is existing?
Yeah, that picnic shelter on this image is a little bit, just a little bit smaller than what it is now, yeah. It's very big right now, yeah.
What?
It's, the picnic shelter that's in existence right now is quite large, uh, and the one in these images is a little bit smaller, the one that's.
So you wanted it smaller?
Well, I was trying to keep us at a reasonable number, so uh, trying to keep it in that two to two point five million dollar total uh cost. Uh, was where I was at, because I thought that was more where we could get things done.
And are you presenting this as the indoor plus this? Because, um, people who, right now, people who are renting this outside are not necessarily interested in having an indoor venue also.
You could do either one, yeah.
Well, I mean, the reason I ask that is because, let's say you have a party outside and a different one inside, is that gonna interfere?
You can close the doors.
Well, that's.
You could in, in a theory and practical terms, you could have two parties the same day.
Correct, you could, um, it'd be like two separate rooms and a conference center. Because they are, the backside of it are roll up, um, garage doors, I, there might, there, oh, there is a double door in the back. Uh, that could have a private party sign on it. Um, and then both would have, you know, separate access to restrooms. So it, that, it is completely feasible that you could have a rental of the same time. I also envisioned many of these rentals probably wanting to go to both. Indoor outdoor.
You're not looking at this to be tax supported?
I think.
I mean, probably you're more than probably looking at Central Park.
I think.
Tax supported then.
Yeah, I think we need to have a discussion about how much we'd be willing to support to make it feasible to do the budget.
I don't think you're in there to win two million.
Yeah.
$2 million with even getting 40,000 off of the revenue that's barely hitting 2% return on money.
Right.
Food for dogs.
This rendering here, is this with demolition, this is starting fresh?
This is a brand new building, yes.
Okay, if you wanted to retain what is already there, would that fit into some sort of a plan? It's a brick building, right?
Into a plan? What do you mean?
Into.
Reuse it basically.
Yes.
I don't, I don't.
Similitude.
I mean.
I mean, can you do that and then we could go a little at a time so we're not? And that's a lot of money. You know, and I, I have a problem with it anyway because we have to, our citizens have to address lead lateral issues. And we're nickel and dimeing over how much money can we do to have some sort of program to help them? All right, and we weren't talking a, a lot of money, but that was a big deal. It's like nickel and dime, let's do it as cheap as possible and, you know. If we, if that isn't going to help them, it's not going to help them. Also, there was a $27,000 zip line, all right? I just got a lot of heartburn with this because we, we're already doing a lot. I would love to see budgets increased for public works. You know, for, you know, the water department, for the sewer department. Increase their budgets so that they can do more. I just think that we're, we're putting our priorities somewhere where they should be spread out more. I think this is great, if you could do it piece by piece, that would be, you know, more palatable.
We would probably have to revisit an architect or a construction firm or somebody to give us estimates and, uh, whether that's feasible. I don't, I don't know how feasible it is, depending on how far we want to go. We just gutted it and maybe we could get what we need out of it, I'm not sure.
I think we just have to be smart in the design, you know, um. I mean, this is, this is great, it looks fantastic. But the other thing too is that, you know, people come to the beach because they want to be at the beach, there's water out in front of them, they go to play.
They also don't like going to porta potties though.
Okay, no, I get that, I can see maybe the, the bathrooms better and the changing area is better, you have showers in there, right?
Uh, there's, no, there's no in-interior showers.
Okay, just the, um, the area, just the little thing outside that has just the, the heads where you just rinse off, okay? Those, I mean, those are, they're not aesthetic, they are necessary, all right? I agree, let's get the porta potties out of there. But if I have small kids and I go to the beach, I just want to make sure that they're spooked. And there's some place where I can take my kid so he can go to the bathroom. I understand you want to have an indoor, you know, for different. How much do you charge, um, for, how much would you charge for an indoor event?
We're thinking like 275 in peak season, 250 with peak season for resident. Over 300, 350, 375 for a non-resident, or rental. The, the rental space is, it's, besides the upfront cost, there's not a tremendous amount of expenses associated with the indoor rental space. Um, the expenses all come out of the concession stand because it's just a low margin operation. Um, currently, we don't open the back doors of the restrooms, uh, the concession stand on, on the bathhouse now because we were having problems with people being able to see into the restrooms. Uh, so the goal here is to get some screens built, uh, at some point. Um, the restrooms are also extremely small, I'm sure they're not ADA compliant within the restrooms the way they are. Um, and the concession stand has a very limited food selection. Uh, we make hot dogs, we microwave some pretzels, popcorn, um, yeah, uh, some, a lot of, uh, prepackaged ice cream things, Dippin' Dots sells really well. But it's, it could make a significant amount more, uh, on that concession stand to get back to the beach if, if we had it built.
In the new, the kitchen area, the concession area, that's going to be larger than what you have right now. Is there, could there be room in there so that local restaurants could have a section of it? Because we don't want to forget about them either.
Yeah, you'd probably do one or the other. There are plenty of park districts that lease out these types of facilities to restaurants or other concessionaires. Um, putting together a business plan preliminarily, you'd probably make more money running it on your own. Uh, there's a lot of effort that goes into that, um, over a lease, uh, situation. But, yeah, you could do one, you probably would not be doing it at the same time. You'd have to do one or the other.
Good, um, something to look into for the concession stand would be a self-contained, it's called a perfect ride. It's got the answer system and everything built right in it, so you don't have to do any remodeling there. And there's just filters that change, that you have to change once every month.
They definitely wouldn't let us do that right now. Our, we're going to shut down in, in a year or two anyways, for all the other things in it, so, uh, yeah.
To, to that point, what, what's the budget for getting it up to code? So it's not.
I don't have a budget number, I'd, I would have to go get an architect or a construction company to start giving me information on that. Council approved the money last year to have an architect do a new, uh, plan, so that's what we did. Um, it's approaching budget season, so it's time to talk about it, if it's worth taking action on the plans that we paid to do. Um, if we need to look another direction.
What funding sources do you think you can get, the science?
I think you'd, you'd probably look at, yeah, uh, West Foundation, obviously. WEDC may do single grants, and then there'd be a lot of, yeah, there'd be a lot of community fundraising. And hopefully you'd look for somebody doing a naming gift or something like that, um.
Like room, room tax dollars?
Room tax, room tax would likely contribute to, uh, the debt, uh, service financing as well. So, it's not the city completely paying out the debt, um, and then hopefully the revenue is contributing to that as well. Uh, when I was doing some map, planning out the numbers, a 30-year, uh, 30-year loan at 4.3%, which is what I think we financed for this last year on our capital, was like $60,000 a year debt service. Um, so you knock that down, $20,000 between revenue and room tax, and you're looking at $40,000 a year of debt service, something like that, for this scale of facility.
Being new to the area, I'm not sure what people are used to paying for indoor wedding venue space, let's say for weddings around here. Is the $300 about in the range for, for wedding venues?
If you have like a complete wedding package.
More like a package instead of just a room?
Well, places like Port, you're going to get food and what, you know, it depends what you want. But, you know, you can cater yourself.
Just paying 350 for the, um, Lincoln Field House, or, um, excuse me, Silver Creek Field House.
Oh, yeah? Oh, okay. That's about what Manitowoc's doing, Manitowoc might be a little bit cheaper, but this is on the beach. Uh, yeah, Nelson Family Pavilion, the one that appeared, they were over $200, they were around $250. They were like a 36-person space on the interior of their, their estate.
Is that like for a game?
That would be a daily, yeah. I think if, if we, I was messing, when I was messing with the business plan, I was thinking, well, during the winter, when there's maybe smaller parties or things like that, you're trying to maximize your weekdays and get people in the space. Maybe you go to half-days or something like that, you could do something in the morning and flip it to the afternoon. Um, be a little bit of stat time, all the nap, not a ton. During the summer, you're going to get big, bigger events that are going to want to play. My, so my, my things that I had, uh, to come away with for all of you is, I would love to take you all to a site visit to the current concession stand. Um, maybe we'd do that as before, uh, an upcoming council meeting at some point, before budget season really starts in earnest would be tremendous. Just to see what we're working with, uh, so you can all see it on the ground. Um, eventually, it'd be nice to restart the review of business and operational pa- uh, plan. I have the, the core of that ready to go, um, to kind of give a perspective of how we had operated. And just, yeah, helping us decide the scope and size and direction. Because there is, we're going to fall off a cliff here eventually with that concession stand in some way, so. And I think, I hope we all agree that having a good concession stand, functioning facility down there in some form is important for the beach, so.
You know, I mean, if you talk to people at Sepia Chapel, because I know, um, there have been weddings down at, um, what do you call it, Harbor, Harbor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Coast Guard, Coast Guard.
No, Harbor, it's one that delivers more part.
Oh, Harborview, yeah.
Okay. And I mean, that is, there's really nothing down and they wanted to have their weddings, you know, by the water. But, um, within Sepia Chapel, uh, was involved in those. But I'm just wondering, um, you know, there are, there are, um, you know, like, what is it before the, the night before you have the rehearsal dinner? You got rehearsal dinners, you've got, for something like this, maybe with Sepia, they've got all the chairs, the tables, the cutlery, the, you know, I mean, if you really want to do this well, I would talk with them. I was just looking up to see how much they charge, but then it's going to be, it's going to be above and beyond a picnic shelter. You know what I mean? It'll be a little bit more.
You're selling the idea great, though.
Well, let's do it then.
And that's the vision that I think we need to hear is, what, uh, what, what is your vision? Is it, is it more or is it just?
Let's get the most out of, if you build this, get the most out of it.
Yeah, so that's the point, is to have the rental space, to get the most out of it. We could probably, uh, generate some revenue that kicks back to the beach maintenance, which everybody wants us to do. The concession stand does not do that now, it doesn't contribute to its own utilities, it could contribute to debt service, uh, as well. Um, the Rotary Pavilion is there, anybody can rent from Rotary Pavilion. If they want to have a wedding in the Rotary Pavilion, they can, there's just the indoor space. Honestly, with Sepia, this would be, maybe there's a way to do some catering for them, but this is competition honestly for Sepia. Um, in some ways, but hopefully there's opportu- there's real room for everybody. You know, there's not a lack of opportunity, I don't think. Um, so I could see them, or caterers coming in as well on these types of events, and then we would take a cut of the catering fees. Uh, you'd add a 10% fee under the cost or something like that, is what a lot of facilities do.
So just, just, just see how much you can make Silver Creek Field House for a one-day wedding package, which includes field house, concession stand, green space, harbor, wedding chairs, it's charged $791.
For a whole, for a full package?
For one day, yeah.
How many people was it?
Probably 100, yeah.
200.
200, so you're going to size a wedding in 255. So we're on the small side.
Yep, small weddings. But still, it's 800 bucks just to pay for that.
I think they'll, just the flat-out demand in the winter time for indoor interior space would be tremendous. The community house is really, I mean, it's very cheap and very affordable to use, community house. Um, it's, it's getting used a lot, but a lot of people want enough of a facility in the parks.
I always get a funny feeling when we talk about government competing with the private sector. Uh, this is one of those issues where there is some overlap there. You know, and maybe there's a future vision where we build it and, like you were talking about leasing earlier, we could lease it to them to run. Now they can bring a full catering package in. We build it, we can lease it out to, to the chapel or, or a local restaurant that might want to try running it for two or three years to see what they can cook in the new kitchen.
I've seen, Waukesha, Waukesha County is not a very good, uh, comparison for us, but I've been on tours in Waukesha County, it's a wealthy suburb. They're, they're renting out their beer garden areas at their parks for $3,000 a month. Uh, and they're making money out of those types of facilities. But that's Waukesha, it's not a, because that's not a great apples-to-apples comparison. But there are, are districts that are doing things like this where they're, they're leasing out the facilities often as beer gardens. Links are, disappeared, so, um.
Yeah, all of them, and Steve Terry, Sean Griffin, I got married, similar thing in Milwaukee County. Uh, they have a third-party vendor that manages all of that and, uh, confusing the city space, and that was a pretty good experience for us.
I think there might be a trend for a lot of people moving towards smaller-sized weddings too. They're not all 200-plus people.
So my, my goal again today was to get you all thinking about it. We got to have major con- uh, conversations, obviously, personal finance committee and the whole budget process about how much we're going to borrow for all the projects for the city this year. Um, what's the capacity there in terms of how do we get this done efficiently? Um, Central Park West raised about a million dollars for Central Park West. Um, hopefully we're, we could, we could pull that off, so fill this facility like this. I think there would be hopefully a lot of enthusiasm behind it, um. So, yeah, so to keep a both in mind, and I would love to take you to the concession stand and get you a tour of the current one. And we could probably double it up, we'd take you to Riverside Park too, where hopefully, fingers crossed, we have some pretty major grant dollars that I, I, I'm feeling good about will come our way for Riverside this next year. We'll have some decisions to make there in terms of capital as well. So it might worth, be worth just visiting a couple places, just to talk about kind of the whole scope of capital. Now, in terms of large DNR grant funding, this facility would not be up their alley at all. Um, but I think our local charitable organizations would be interested.
Yeah, and you did it, did it across the street. People stepped up and they want to run across the street for Central Park.
And there's other creative ideas, I don't know, maybe Lakeside Foods helped us out. Uh, maybe they're super happy with us, or they, they help us with, you know, food or something like that. Or they, they come in with a sponsorship or something or two, or serve their food or something, I don't know. I mean, we could get creative in those ways as well, so. They own Shermay. Shermay, that'd be a killer, so. I said I was going to get into the depths of the, the business plan, but our average transaction, the average cost of a transaction right now at the concession stand is $6.60, which is quite low. Um, and, but it's because we're selling candy and things like that. I would, I see this menu starting to really transform into more of, no, you're like going to buy them. We need to get up to $10, at least $10 per transaction, where we need to be selling a hamburger and a side of something and a drink, you know, like, where, that's, and that's where the families come to get food, it's junk food right now, because that's what we can kind of facilitate. Um, if you wanted like a meal, you go up there and you grab a hot dog that we warmed up and heated, uh, for the most part. Or a pretzel that we've microwaved. Um, so the, the capacity, the, the things that we can do in that right now are very limited.
Right now, what do you have, two people running the concession stand?
Yeah, mostly, if it's a busy-ish day, we're at two people, we try to even trim it down to one. We just try to run as lean as possible because it's just saving money. And we, right now, we're open 11 to 6. Uh, that, we don't, was every day, we, we tried to stay open 11, 6, but like today is slow, it's a cool, uh, day on a Monday, so we closed early, just trying to save money. Um, I could see us possibly staying open a little bit later, even to 7 or 8 o'clock, if we got more responsible meals. But a lot of these examples that the pictures are doing, they have small two or three-piece bands, families come and hang out, they have a beer trailer there, uh, there's responsible drinking, and there's food and music, and it's a gathering space. But a lot, that's what a lot of these people are doing, so.
Is there something that can be done, um, on the, you know how you, you have the doors going out to the, the second floor? Is there something you can do with that space that's up above the concession stand?
Right now, it'd be like a seating area for the concession stand, basically, yeah. Right now, the way it's drawn up, that space would be, uh, accessed with a spiral staircase, so it is not ADA accessible. Uh, it doesn't have to be, uh, but it would be an observation deck with some seating up there. Um, yeah, you'd have to go hardcore next level with an elevator. Yeah, you'd have to go hardcore next level with an elevator and stuff like that if you wanted to go and make it fully accessible. So you got.
It's also been used as a.
I think, I think people would love this.
Does the only way to do it is to have an elevator? There's no way to, like, do it, it would be ramped like a parking garage situation or something? I don't know how that works.
Yeah, that'd be just as expensive, probably, I would guess. The amount of space it would.
I don't like it if it's that.
The amount of space it would take up would be huge.
Yeah.
The pitch for ramp is like in front of my bar.
Yes.
Yeah.
You definitely.
Right. And we don't want that necessarily, but an elevator holds a very expensive, but I don't want it if it's not ADA.
But there is, I mean, there's seating up. There's, it's all porch, kind of front porch style around the side in front of that. We would bounce those swings off the front of it, so there would be some seating around the side of it as well. That's where most people go. There's very limited seating there now. There's three or four picnic tables in front of the concession stand now. This does, also does a poor job of kind of showing the space in between the front of the concession stand and the street. So right now, there is a concrete pad there that has a few picnic tables in front of the concession stand, so. There's definitely opportunity for what is not shown in this image and what that would look like.
Just to toss it out before we move on, another model in the municipality I worked at previously was when we leased it to a private company in the community to run. You know, we're out of the menu, we're out of the staffing, the personnel, and the hours. They could set that as a private company, just like any restaurant in town. And we charged them 20% of gross alcohol sales every month. 20% of what they made on alcohol, plus 12% of what they made on food and anything else they might have sold. So that's how the rent was determined each month. It was a floor of at least $500 a month. It was always way higher than that. 20% of alcohol, 12% of everything else. Different model.
Perfect, because we had, so before, it was something like that. Well, the first year, so 2022 was my first year. Terry had made the decision going into that year before I got here that the Parks Department was gonna run the concession stand directly instead of letting a concessionaire come in. We definitely make more money now running it by ourselves than when the concessionaire was doing it. I think the busy, the beach is probably busier, and we've just kind of got more efficient. That's not to say that without, if we had a nice facility where they could do some really good, more restaurant-style things, that it wouldn't be, or, I mean, selling beer would be. I, I can't imagine how much money. None of my math, I considered selling beer, and, and so that's a whole other thing that Chief Miner can roll, as I said.
I changed department.
Is that Fallon Beer Garden?
What's that?
Is that a beer garden thing?
Yeah, Fallon Beer Garden, probably.
The only thing is that you have that as a licensed carryout for beer. Any private license, no, it's not related for alcohol to a private. Just not to bring under period, but. They'd have to buy it from the license.
Yeah, which is an opportunity for the licensed person to make, but we take a cut. Food, pot. So why I ask is keep it open mind. Let's discuss it as we think about the big, big package of capitals going into this fall, and I would love to get you guys out there for a visit. I can make contacts. They suck, they suck, though. I don't know how well they convince you. Maybe that's the point.
Can't you just license the concession stand building?
It would have to have a separate address.
The license is the concession stand building.
For alcohol.
Not yet.
That was a question.
Yeah, why can't?
She said you need a separate address. So you need two addresses.
You could make it like Suite A.
Sure. Park A.
And you can make like whatever the address is, and then make the concession stand Suite A, because, you know, you can close it off in between.
So I was way around it. Tell us your vision. We can figure out how it may work. All right, ready to move on?
Yes.
Dogs, regulation animals, next on the agenda. Post-up date to the animal control regulations in Two Rivers. Okay, this, this is an animal to clarify. Dog licensing, including penalties for unlicensed animals of $250 for violation. Codifying expectations for peddlers who clean up after their animals. And then updates to the rules related to livestock and the keeping or slaughtering of animals within the city. Chief?
Yeah, I guess, really, there's been several questions. I'm really just looking for guidance on council's thoughts on moving forward. Some of these things have come up in the past. The latest question that came up, which was a good question, and maybe an overlook on our parts, all of ours, including myself, is we allowed for the keeping of chickens for the idea of laying eggs, with everybody's interest. And whatever your thoughts on that, we passed that. However, the, the question came up, what do you do when they're no longer egg-laying? And can people harvest those? And how do they cope about harvesting those animals? So this was presented to our CSO a couple months back, and it was a good question. We don't really address it, and, and even more so, it's doubled down in a contradicting ordinance that says you can't kill, follow, or birds, so therefore, we had a contradiction. So this was looking to basically clarify that, yes, you could in fact harvest, you know, said animal. But then, you know, having some sort of decency and humane practice of doing so, and how we would handle that. So we put this towards our, our legal team to discuss and come back with some thoughts. So they put together, incorrect if I'm wrong, Sean, I think it is, online. This was kind of a, this was kind of a compilation of what some other communities have done and looking into.
Yeah, so I looked at what four or five different surrounding communities and tried to just give an idea here. Like Chief said, you know, we, I guess, we don't know the temperature. If this is something that council's interested in, or if it's so in what form. But like Chief said, you know, the reason why is a good point that, you know, if you want to harvest chickens, no longer laying eggs, or if you, uh, curtail the herd, because one's sick or something, the, the code doesn't currently allow for that. In fact, if you can't kill an animal anywhere, then this is a pure error unless you're a piece of humane officer. So we wanted to have that conversation and kind of get thoughts here, so that we can make adjustments to the ordinance as needed, and then eventually bring it back for council action, either any of the boards or all of it together, just getting your thoughts.
I think the other thought that everybody could have thinks of is, when I was growing up, and many of you may be the same way, you know, families raised a lot of things, and maybe they, they got a whole family together to harvest chickens. And I don't think you'd want that taking place on a city lot the same way that you would in a rural setting, so I'm keeping that in mind.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm over here, one thing we said, only the two least intense residential districts. We, as, as drafted, my office has in there as permission for residents. Certainly, I'm hoping to change that or make talks on that. I remember back when I was at a city planner, we ran into a gentleman who was keeping chickens in his apartment, and, you know, that strikes me as something that we don't want to encourage, you know, the sort of negative side effects of, you know, you went too small of a lot, being in, you know, multifamily housing, doing that, it's certainly not something we want to encourage. We want to gauge your thoughts on the possibility of grand individual slumming, or your lots, and there's less opportunities for that to be nuisance to their neighbors.
One thing I had mentioned, too, is that one thing that kind of adds into this that we, we have dealt with quite frequently in the past. I know it was brought towards council in the far past was the practice of, you know, the state's venison. You know, in, in the deer herd, it used to be very common practice that everybody had a deer hanging in their yard. You know, I've taught hunter safety, and the ethics and morals have really changed over the years. The laws have changed. We're now, you don't even have to have deer visible, so we don't parade them around town. There's a lot of people that, that aren't impressed by those, those acts and that way of, of going about things. But being that, I, I am a deer hunter. I harvest my own meat. I do so discreetly, you know, in my, in my garage. But we have had issues where people are just kind of turning the screws to their neighbors here in the city and hanging deer for up to two weeks before we're able to address something. So that may be something to discuss, too, as far as, you know, are we doing that with all animals? Or do we want the idea that you can do something as long as it's humane, it's healthy, and it's discreet, you know, it's not bothering your neighbors?
I understand.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm a deer hunting.
We're in your backyard instead of your backyard.
We're seeing standards for potential issues individuals wouldn't be able to do. That's a sort of comment that Chief Miner just talked about. But we, we have specific standards for removal of waste, not creating a nuisance, not keeping it in like the view of the, from walking down the street or from the public view, so we're trying to incorporate that as well.
And then this ordinance would clarify that you can only slaughter livestock if you're in the RD, which we don't have any zone RD rural development now. But that would leave the R1 low-density residential districts, and you guys have seen the zoning map before, the colors you can see from where you're sitting at, all the white. Hard to see, but all the white is where you would be allowed to slaughter your livestock.
And that's just a suggestion, you know, I'm not, I think it's council's job to draw the line on what, if you want to allow this, what zoning districts you do and do not. On this, as a starting point, I drew the line between R1 and R2, certainly to, to your discretion.
Adam, any other question?
I'm certainly not up to speed on any of this stuff by, by no means. But for whatever reason, I get a visual when people, I guess, harvest their meat, that they usually have face masks on and stuff like that. Is there any chance of airborne illness from, from doing stuff like that, that I have that vision of people wearing that stuff? Is that just me? No? And then, or is any process like that, you have to, you know, prepare the area and so forth, be clean? So, but as far as airborne stuff, it would have to be something, the disease the animal might have. All these things have to be taken into consideration, whether you're doing a hunt or whatever. Because remember, we had to, what's that?
Bird flu, I think it is.
Well, bird flu, but.
CWD?
Right, right, yeah, CWD, you're right. Yeah, not usually airborne, but it's usually more of like passing bacteria, being cognizant of that, hair, things like that. And then the second one is reading that. It says, no person may slaughter livestock within the view of person, and it just keeps going on to livestock. Are we allowing people to bring livestock in to do this? Or are we limiting this? Because it doesn't like say limiting this to what you can already have within the city loans.
Right, and that was one of the questions. And we brought that up. Use livestock because that was just kind of a more encompassing term. You know, but we had talked about something that would address more animals or how we would identify those animals. But really, a lot of these questions raise the concern, like, let's make sure to get some input from all of you as well. Good, good point, Adam.
Yeah, so what, what I have here drafted, and it's in large capital A in the block above, lawful owner of livestock, lawfully kept in accordance. I could add more to the specification, but my intent here is that, you know, only the homeowner who keeps that livestock on the premises would be able to slaughter it.
And that's what I want to make sure that it says, not that people all of a sudden, yeah, I can't keep a cow here, but all of a sudden, I, I bought one and I'm gonna do it myself in my backyard. I don't think we, we need to get into that. I think we can, we can solve a problem by people like keep egg or have chickens to lay eggs that need to do something with that bird afterwards. Makes sense. I just want to make sure that we're not all of a sudden having pigs.
But I think, too, like, that's where I brought up, you know, hunting of animals, too. We got a lot of duck hunters and everything else around here where maybe that's not something you want, like a lemonade stand out in the front yard. You could certainly do in your backyard discreetly and not slaughter people, I think is the intent. Like, I think all those things are good things, and we should all do them, but we should respect our neighbors, too. So livestock. That's what I'm saying. You have more of an expectation in your backyard than you do in the front terrace, you know, front yard.
The definition of livestock, what we're talking about, swine, sheep, goats, poultry, farm-raised deer, farm-raised fish, and bees.
So should it say livestock in like wild animals or wild, wild game?
Well, I think, going back to what Adam said, I think it should just be those, you know, legally, legally kept by ordinance, or something along that line. Not that, not that we're extending it.
Usually you kill it out there and you come in and do the deal.
Well, like someone traps, they would do their stuff in a garage.
Yeah, you, you could have something that says, you know, something that's legally permissible by ordinance in the city to already, you know, keep or, or have, and then also anything legally hunted or trapped by Wisconsin statute, something like that. I'm sure our legal team could come up with the right verbiage, but that, that's what I.
No, I'm, I'm writing that down. Yeah, that, that's a good suggestion. Livestock's probably a bit too broad, but I guess I'm just trying to get thoughts here so I can make out it's on this piece back.
Does any of the council want to expand it outside of the R1 into the R2, or do you want to keep it in the R1?
Man, I think it's lines, it's discreet.
R2 would be this color, so doesn't, you know, the white into the peach color as well.
What's the difference in the zoning on that?
Um, I don't know exactly.
R1 is where everything gets, gets made before it gets re-zoned to something else. And according to man to law, R1 is usually residential and agricultural because it's on the outskirts edge. Like, R2, I suppose, would be because you can have a two-family home, but it's not.
Well, that's RD, right?
Yeah, RD was the rural.
Yeah, RD is our ag slash residential. R1 is our single-family residential, still looking at larger lot sizes. And then R2 is our small lot, single-family and duplexes.
Yeah, so you can share a backyard.
That's why I can remember this, but certainly, I think R2 would not be inconsistent with what, for example, the city of Orona does. They allow it in more intense districts up until you get into the multi-family district. I'm not sure if that might be too intense, but there's a network municipalities who allow in more intense districts.
Could you allow it more intense, but still kind of go more on the discreet area where it requires, like, you know, that you, that you have to have either a fenced-in yard, you know, rear yard that you're doing this, or a shed or a garage?
Yeah, we, we rather does R1 without screen, and then if you want to say R2, it has to be screened from a view of, you know, neighbors or that sort of thing.
I think that would be the biggest necessity.
I think as far as livestock goes, like cows and sheep.
Well, you could still have that because.
You have to have a license of the state for killing anything, don't you? I'm not sure what.
You do not need a license if you are not selling it or serving it to people. If you kill yourself and you consume it in your own home, you've gotten lost.
Farmers do it.
That's purpose.
You can kill your own animals, but you can't kill like twenty-one.
Well, I know, but you can.
The guy down the street.
But you could sell a cow to someone.
And we could have somebody, you know, we do have a farm, still grandfather that, you know, that could technically do that, so. But yeah, a good point. That's in the ordinance is, it's, none of this has to do with for sale items.
Right.
Is it legal to have chickens in an R2 zone residence?
Yes. Again, I think it goes back to that, where permissible already, so, you know, so that you're. Or, or it would have to be, you know, a chicken that you shot legally by the DNR standards, which they're currently isn't. Unless so a pheasant or something like that, you could.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think you'd want it to be allowed for those, those same homeowners, you know, regardless. If they're allowed to have the chickens, they should be able to harvest them, I think.
But what are people doing with their chickens now?
Good question, Bonnie. That's why when this came up, it was a, it was a. Good question, Bonnie. That's why when this came up, it was a, it was, it was an overlook.
Obviously, I didn't screen their neighbors, maybe in the garage or something.
And not announcing it to your whole block when you're.
Luckily, luckily, you know, it hasn't become an issue, so. But a, but a responsible, a responsible chicken owner had brought it up, like, hey, you know, what am I to do?
Right.
Like, I'd like to harvest these, but.
Up the road, take care of it, bring it back.
Yeah, because the other thing is you're held to only a certain amount of chickens, so now if they're not laying eggs, they're not for that use anymore, so. I'm not a chicken owner, but I get, you know, it makes sense.
What do you, how do you dispose of the bits that are left over on two parts of that animal?
Usually properly and just in your garbage, your garbage disposal.
That is a problem though. A lot of deer carcasses end up in a ditch.
Oh, sure.
You know, that's a, it's gotta be a five hundred dollar fine, or whatever you call it.
Well, yeah, there's different rules now through the D N R. A lot of them want you to leave as much of it in the place that you killed the animal because of the C W D stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but a lot of people bring them home and then, you know, depending on your garbage disposal company, you know, they'll tell you how to dispose of it properly. Usually it's just banging, you know, like you do with everything else, but.
Don't put it down the garbage disposal, we got a problem.
Be in trouble.
You do the next one on the, on the B list there.
I think everybody, council wise, was in favor of these amendments that we talked about.
Sure.
To allow sed harvester and then. And we look to put something together and bring it to, cause I, I think while we're at it, like I said, like with deer and stuff like that, that have been problems in the past, it's better to just kind of bring it all together. We want to allow it, but be respectful of everybody in the city. And, and the fact that times have changed.
Makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Close session here?
Thank you, Sean.
So close session. Uh, so the city, city council reserves to arrange entry in a close session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one D for deliberating for negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, for conducting others specifying public business. Tonight, discuss sale of property. Looking for motion to go into close session.
I'll make a motion to go into close session.
Thank you, second time. Slotted second to, uh, in a council discussion. The inaugural coach, Amanda.
Bill Liffey.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Schumodis.
Aye.
Scott St. Plussen.
Aye.
Edie Husky.
That's science.
I will abstain. Okay.
Darla Claire.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
We are in quotes.
Okay, be careful of our chickens.
Beautiful. We were kids, we had a turtle.